13th of 2016. We're glad you're with us today. Before we call our meeting officially to order, we will have the invocation and pledge. The invocation is going to be presented by one of our longtime friends and community blessings. You are a blessing to our community and we're somewhat grateful that you're here. Father Papa Giorgio from Holy Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church. I encourage everyone at least once in their life to go to the Father's church for one of his services. You'll be inspired forever, I promise you. That'll be followed by the pledge by Deputy Mygate, who was born and raised in Cobb County, believe it or not, and he was hired by the Sheriff's Office in 2011, currently assigned to the detention center, and he is proud to have served the Cobb County community. For those of us who show, please rise for the invocation and a pledge.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. O heavenly King, comfort to the Spirit of truth, present in all places and filling all things, the treasure of your blessings, and the giver of life, come and dwell in us and bless us from every stain and save our souls, the good one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy immortal, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy immortal, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy and mighty, holy immortal, have mercy on us. We offer thanksgiving to you, O Lord, for all your gifts and blessings. We humbly come to you and ask that you may send upon us your heavenly spirit to enlighten our hearts and minds. Give us of your wisdom and knowledge. Help us to know your will for your people whom we serve. Guide us in all our decisions to do what is best for them. Help us to shine with your love and compassion. Grant us your peace and your love, for glorified is your name, of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and always and unto the ages of ages.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father, and thank you Deputy. Before we call the meeting to order, I got a special request to make a quick presentation. Is Ms. Bonner here? Ms. Bonner, if you'd come forward. Ms. Bonner is President Cobb Chapter NAACP, and she asked to make her request. Brad, if you'd give her a mic.
Good morning. My name is Deanne Thompson-Bonner. I'm the President of the Cobb County Branch NAACP, and I know the Chairman did not know why we wanted to do this this morning. But on behalf of the Cobb County Branch NAACP, we really wanted to come today and say thank you. Thank you for all that you have did serving this county. We have been partners throughout your whole leadership, and we wanted to present this to you today.
To me?
To you.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, to you. I think you are the Chairman still of Cobb County.
I didn't realize that.
Well, I know you didn't realize it, and because Lisa Cupid, who is also a Commissioner, is a member of the NAACP, and if there's anyone else here that's a part of the NAACP would like to be a part of this presentation, you could zip up here real quick, but if not, we're going to present the Cobb County Branch NAACP, present to Cobb County Chairman Tim Lee, in recognition of your service, dedication, and commitment to Cobb County and the region. We appreciate you.
Thank you, dear. So I'll call the meeting to order. First tab, in the presentations, there's three items, and the first is to present a check to Safe Kids Cobb County. Mr. Heaton, Director Dr. Heaton, I believe you're leading this conversation.
Thank you Chairman. Come on up, anybody that was a part. Very good. Thank you and good morning, and happy holidays to everyone. We're here today to present from the Cobb County Public Safety, our golf classic that we hold in October. This is our 13th year of doing that, and every year it continues to grow. The last, I think, eight years, Lisa Crossman and I have co-chaired the committee, but that means that there's a lot of workers behind the scenes. And I want to say before we get going too far, thank you all so much for everything that y'all have done. We couldn't do it without you, but like I say, 13 years Cobb County Public Safety started this and given to charity, and it has continued to grow. It is truly now the Cobb Public Safety Golf Classic for Safe Kids Cobb County and to our Safety Village. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Hankerson for allowing us to continue to do this, to our board. Many of you have participated or come out to be a part of it, and we appreciate that. And I just want to say to Lisa Crossman as a co-chair with Cobb Douglas Public Health, thank you so much for helping all these years do what we have done. And with that, I'm going to let Lisa tell you more about what the golf classic has done this year.
Thank you, Sam. Well, first, before I get started on the golf tournament, I do want to take this opportunity to thank Sam and the Cobb Fire Police and 911 staff who every single day work tirelessly to keep our children safe in this county. So I hope you all will join me in giving a hand to those staff for all that they do every day. Y'all can do better than that. We need to be arousing applause for them. Come on, one more time. They are amazing. Sam, thank you for your leadership and your support of this event, to the Chairman and all the Commissioners and County Manager. We really appreciate all the work that you do every day to help support the Safe Kids Coalition and the Cobb Safety Village in helping us to reduce preventable childhood injuries. Secondly, I want to thank the staff of Wellstar and Cobb Douglas Public Health, the Cobb Public Safety Staff, the Safety Village folks, for all working together hard these past 13 years to raise awareness about children's injury prevention and to raise funds for their work that they do throughout the year. You'll hear a little bit more about each of those groups in just a minute, but you won't find a better team. I know that many of you in the audience are probably involved in a lot of community work, and I can tell you that the people that stand before you here are absolutely the dream team of when it comes to committees. Every single box is checked, every stone is turned in order to bring money and effort into the Safety Village and to the Safe Kids Coalition mission. So thank you to all of the group and the people behind the scenes, like Sam said, that have made this event happen. We could not ask for a better group. It is apparent, if you haven't looked at some of the statistics recently, it is apparent from the work that these groups are doing, that we have indeed made headway in Cobb County about the deaths and hospitalizations related to injuries, childhood injuries, but we still have a lot of work to do. So this certainly, this 13th event is certainly not the last, and we still all need to work together to make sure that our children are safe in their homes, in their cars, on the playgrounds, everywhere they are in Cobb County, to keep them free of injuries. Third, I want to thank our sponsors for this event. We had almost 100 sponsors and donors who come together to help make this possible and to make it a success. Our key sponsors this year were Motorola Diversified Electronics, Atlanta Braves Foundation, Glock, Wellstar, and Metro Atlanta Ambulance Service. We certainly could not do it without their support, so I hope you will join me in giving them thanks through your business and patronage as well as your applause now for them. I need to recognize Atlanta Glass Professionals for winning the tournament. We had about 150 players, and man, they just smoked it on the tournament that day, so congratulations to them. Most importantly, I'm honored to chair this event with Sam. We have worked together for many years, and I appreciate the, with so many things going on and so much that's a life or death situations, that you make time for this event and to raise money for the work that Safe Kids and the Safety Village do every day from a prevention standpoint. I really do appreciate working with you. And drumroll, and helping to raise $75,300 this year for Safe Kids and the Safety Village, the best year ever. I'm going to turn it back to Sam, and Commissioner Weatherford, if you would come down, wanted to have a chance to do these check presentations to the Safety Village Foundation and Safe Kids Cobb Coalition.
Thank you, Lisa. First, what we decided to do this year was we would take 10% of proceeds and give to the Safety Village Foundation because they do work hand in hand with the Cobb Safe Kids, so their first check presentation will be to the Cobb County Safety Village Foundation. And...
No, no, if you would like to make a few comments.
Thank you. We really appreciate this. We have a great community partnership with Safe Kids, and not only are missions aligned to keep our kids and our community safe, our strategies too, we have on-hand experiences. Our kids are over there, and our families over there, playing and learning, and we are really, really proud of Safety Village and Safe Kids Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Natane. Picture, picture. Tiffy, four number. Tiffy, check. Tiffy, check. So it doesn't reflect.
Down. Yes, because we can't see Cecilia.
And I'm not even getting an elbow for that.
And the next check presentation will go to Safe Kids Cobb County.
So Lisa stole everything I was going to say, but I do want to echo that this truly is the dream team of people to work with for raising this money. And what this money will do for our county, for the children in our county, is help to educate the families as well as provide safety equipment. So this money does not, it goes straight to our programming, and we will utilize that to help grow our programs this year. But I do have to say that we, this is our 13th annual golf tournament, but Safe Kids has had this partnership with Public Safety for 25 years now, so we're very proud of that.
And with that, thank you all, appreciate it very much, and let me tell you, we are already, right after the first year, we start working on the tournament for October, and we send out invites, so don't be late because we always run up to the, at the end, everybody wants a piece of it, so get in early. So thank you all very much, appreciate you.
Director Heaton, I remember the year I was fortunate enough to play, and it was raining cats and dogs, and neither the fire nor police would want to walk off first. I mean, it was not the conditions that we were playing golf, but neither one of them wanted to be the one that walked off the course first. We all got very wet, but a great cause. Thank you for all the people that make that happen. The next item, Agenda Item Number Two, is to present Cobb Christmas Funds raised by Cobb County Employee.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Commissioners. Cobb County has had a longstanding relationship with Cobb Christmas for more than 25 years, where employees have collectively raised funds to give to Cobb Christmas to benefit their organization, and this year's no different, where we have raised over $4,200 collectively from the county employees to present to Cobb Christmas for their organization to benefit the kids they help in the community. And I'm going to turn it over and let the two gentlemen here on the Cobb Christmas Board introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about Cobb Christmas.
Good morning. My name is Mark Riggins, and everybody knows Chief here, I believe. A little bit about Cobb Christmas. Cobb Christmas started back in 1963 under the Center for Family Resources. Then in 1980, from people in the community seeing there was a greater need for it, it became its own nonprofit. It's a nonprofit board. Everybody that works for Cobb Christmas is a volunteer, from the Board of Directors to the people you see over at J.R. Miller Park, to what's going to happen this week with Stuff a Bus. We have partnerships throughout the county. One of those, like I said, Stuff a Bus is with CCT, and what Stuff a Bus does is goes around to different locations in the county where the employees have donated toys, and we take those, all those toys back to J.R. Miller Park, and then those toys will be distributed. A little bit more about Cobb Christmas, how the families are selected through the Center for Family Resources. When they do their registration for Thanksgiving, we do a registration at that same time. The requirements for Cobb Christmas is you have to be living Cobb County, and there's an income limit based on your family size. So this check that we're going to receive today will go an extremely long way into what we do, and we cannot do without you. If you're interested in volunteering for Cobb Christmas, just go to our website, sign up, and we will put you to work. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name's Dave Harris, and I've been with Cobb Christmas 26 years, so I guess I don't know anything else to do but Cobb Christmas come Christmas time. This year, we're going to do 1,100 families. At Cobb Christmas, we'll distribute three toys and a basket of food to each family that comes through, and we'll do it from Friday through Saturday. So we run 20 families through every 15 minutes. For any help or any volunteers, just come out to Jim Miller Park, and we'll definitely put you away, and I want to say have a happy holiday, and thanks for the Commissioners and the employees of Cobb County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, and thank you to the Cobb County employees for making that a successful event. Item Three is present third quarter customer service excellence award. Kristen, I believe you're going to lead our conversation.
Yes.
Board and time manager.
I think Mr. Hankerson is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations on your honor there. You didn't know you were adding an item to, so that you'd be recognized there, but congratulations. It is my great honor to present our customer service specialist award. It's something that I'm very proud of, that I was a part of initiating a customer service effort. We have tendered categories of departments to get involved. We can have up to 13 nominees, but it is a program where we recognize our employees for customer service. In government, all we have to offer is customer service, so there's a focus. We appointed a customer service council that do an outstanding job, and we are so proud of what they do. But our nominees, our board, we recognize them with a visit from me nominating, or recognize them as a quarterly winner, is recommended by the council in the presence of their peers, and I'll tell you, I have not met one yet that we're expecting it. We do that in the presence of their peers, and so that's good. And then we have a photo shoot with the Chairman of the Cobb County Breakfast. Their photo is displayed on our website for one for a quarter. They get a gift from the Board of Commissioners. They also makes them eligible to participate in the customer specialist of the year, and so we encourage them to keep up the good work for what they do. And so we are honored today to turn it over to Kristen to recognize our third quarter winners. We've been doing this, Kristen, I think, since 91 started, but it's been going, and it really took legs in the middle of late 90s. But again, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Good morning Chairman, Commissioners, and special guests. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is a great honor to present the third quarter winners of the Cobb County Customer Service Excellence Award. Today, we will recognize five employees. Each of these employees was nominated by their coworkers for consistently going above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to providing customer service excellence. Honorees, please come forward when I call your name. Today, we have two winners from our Parks Department. Kara Lynn currently coordinates programs at J.R. Miller Park, but is receiving this recognition today because of her willingness to jump in and help her coworkers when she worked at the Civic Center. Throughout her time at the Civic Center, Kara would stay to help maintenance cleanup after overlapping events and ensure any facility issues were taken care of for her next leases. While at the Civic Center, she was also given the added responsibility of being the interim program coordinator for J.R. Miller Park. This meant splitting her days between the two facilities. Kara took on the added responsibility with no complaint so that leases would not, would have a seamless experience at both facilities. Thank you for stepping up to help your department and coworkers, Kara, who are a great example of customer service excellence for all of our employees to follow. Next up, we have Natalia Smith, also known as Tasha. She works at our West Cobb Aquatic Center in Seven Springs Water Park as a maintenance technician, too. One day last summer, while working at Seven Springs, a toddler at the park was found unresponsive. She performed first aid and CPR on the child until EMS arrived on the scene. Tasha is a certified lifeguard, and although isn't required of her job, her quick actions were instrumental in the child making a full recovery. Thank you, Tasha. Keep up the great work. Next up, we have Deonte Monroe from the Water System. Over the past couple of years, Deonte has received coveted letters of appreciation from Cobb County residents and business owners. One example of Deonte's customer service fortitude occurred during a recent service call. A resident had a sewage backup enter her home. It was found that the problem had to be corrected through the neighbor's property. When Deonte informed the neighbor of the repair, a volatile situation arose, abusive language was used toward him. Deonte was able to defuse the situation, and the needed repairs were made. The resident wrote the following in her letter. "I will be forever grateful to you and your crew for helping get my home back in working order and for enduring this difficult situation. Thank you, Deonte. You are a shining example of what it means to put customers first, even when difficult situations are encountered." Next up, we have Stanley Montcom from our Property Management Department. Stanley spends his days handling general warehouse operations for the department. His colleagues throughout the county praise Stanley for his focus on customer service. Most recently, Stanley volunteered to drive for a group of individuals touring Commissioner Cupid's district. Before the tour, Stanley found time in his personal schedule to test drive the route so that he knew where to go, and on the day of the tour, he brought a cooler of water for the guests. Thanks for all you do for the county, Stanley. Your customer focus is greatly appreciated. We are proud to work alongside you. Our final honoree today is Priti Kumari from Information Services. This customer service superstar always puts her clients first. Whether she is taking on extra tasks so the department can implement large projects, creating training documents for users of the eFlex e-file system used by magistrate court, or creating various victim notification letters for the victim advocate unit of the solicitor's office, Priti puts her best foot forward for the customer service. She has even cross-trained with a retiring judicial team member to review and provide documentation in regard to his current duties so that there will be a point of reference when he leaves. Thank you, Priti. We are proud to call you a Cobb County employee. Ladies and gentlemen, these are our third quarter winners.
And lastly, on behalf of our Board of Commissioners, thank you, elected officials and our citizens, we want to thank you for what you do, and I know we have a lot of supporting audience for our award winners, family, friends, coworkers. Would you please stand and be recognized? It takes that kind of supporting team, and again, congratulations on what you do.
Great work, and congratulations to our third quarter customer service excellent award winners. We're proud of you, very, very proud of you, and to the leadership that helps provide an environment in which they can shine, so thank you. Tab Two is Support Services Agency, one item of public hearing. Ms. Sharon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager, Chair in Stanley, Director Information Services Department. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing regarding professional services to implement a business intelligence and dashboarding tool for Cobb County Government. Professional services for this project are expected to exceed $100,000. Notice of public hearing for this project was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on November 4th, November 11th, and November 18th in 2016. At this time, we request you hold the public hearing as advertised. This is a 2016 PLOS project under technology improvements, and will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners for approval at a later date.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for this Agenda Item, this Agenda Item only. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this item, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next tab, Tab Three is Public Comment.
The first speaker is Jim Nichols. If you'd come forward, please.
Good morning. My name is Jim Nichols. I'm a lifelong resident of West Cobb County, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the rezoning of the Collins property on Dallas Highway, OB AD formerly Z-98. For the past 25 years, I've lived on Artillery Point in Garrison Ridge subdivision. I've watched West Cobb grow from a peaceful farm community to what it is today, and for the most part, it's been good growth and very well planned, but this recent rezoning request has me very concerned. My primary attraction to Garrison Ridge back when I bought it was a long and winding, beautiful entrance to the subdivision. That entrance was lost several years ago when the Lowe's store and the adjacent strip mall was built. Now, I'm obliged, when I entered the subdivision, to see the backside of Taco Mac, complete with dumpsters, gas meters, gutters, and such. My neighbors and I regularly are picking up trash, beer bottles, and other things that are left by the Taco Mac patrons. We now have a fireworks store there in that strip center. We also have a vape shop. Will an adult bookstore or tattoo parlor be next? I'm not going to bore you with the typical arguments about traffic, blasting, compromising of wetlands, destruction of Civil War relics and such. I'm simply here to ask for your consideration, to consider the common sense aspects of the planned development and the detrimental effect it will have on me and my neighbors. It's my understanding that although Z-97, I'm sorry, Z-98 rezoning was denied back in May, recent mediation results in leaving Garrison Ridge homeowners in an uphill battle to maintain our quality of life and our investments. Columbia Properties has argued that somehow this rezoning will violate the constitutional rights of Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins has every right to sell his property, but I do not believe that rezoning his property such that he will theoretically realize larger financial gains has anything to do with his constitutional rights. Rather, I would argue that rezoning of this property will be trampling on the rights and the quality of life of all of us who spent so many years investing in our homes in Garrison The modified plan, as I understand it, includes... The modified plan, as I understand it, includes a so-called 10-acre park. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a park. It's simply a wooded area behind a huge retaining wall on the backside of yet another commercial development. Any increase in tax revenues as a result of this development, I see will probably be offset by the maintenance and patrolling of that so-called park. You've been presented with a petition signed by over 1,100 concerned Cobb residents. And this room has been packed with citizens who object to this rezoning each time it's been addressed. Ninety-five percent of the residents in the three neighborhoods closest to this project and most affected by it, Garrison Ridge, Heritage Oaks, Chestnut Ridge, are all opposed to this rezoning. In my opinion, you cannot ignore the overwhelming concern by so many that approving this rezoning will be a huge irreversible mistake. Granting this request defies common sense, and I'm respectfully requesting that you deny the rezoning, OB AD. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jack Hassard.
Good morning. Thank you very much for enabling me to speak today. My name is Jack Hassard. I live in Heritage Oaks. I'm also Professor Emeritus at Georgia State University. What that means, Emeritus means I'm old. I wrote a report last year that summarized many of the things that were just said. I titled it "The Building of a Perfect Storm," which was a metaphorical title for what is happening at Garrison Ridge. The report itself is 36 pages long. It's based on my research in collaboration with the citizens that live in the three communities that abut the Collins property. This report was presented last year, well, actually earlier this year, to the Commissioners, to the Planning Commission, and it was read and studied. And as a result, not just of this report, but of many of our presentations, you denied the Collins approach to trying to rezone this land. And so, interestingly enough, the plan that they are presenting is included in our report. We found out last year that this third plan is what I call it. It's where you have a shopping center, a wooded area, and a very, very big pond. We have this in this report, which was documented last May. I also calculated how much overburden and rock would be removed to flatten this land so that it is at the same elevation as Dallas Highway. Now, believe it or not, you probably were not told how much rock and overburden will be removed, but I will tell you. The rock there is very heavy. It's dense. And so, when you start moving cubic yards of it, you end up with tons of rocks. In fact, we even calculated it would take about 20,000 truckloads to remove all of this Now, there's another thing that's very interesting about this project. The county has invested enormous amounts of money and put it in the form of a map, but it's really data. It's information. And it tells how the land should be zoned. And it turns out, right along Garrison Commons, there's a stop sign, literally. But figuratively, there's a stop sign that says, "No more commercial building beyond the Taco Mac strip zone." Now, that was done for a purpose. It was part of the, it's called the Neighborhood Activity Center, which is very big. Collins and his lawyers claim that they're going to build a step-down size shopping center. That's not true. Their shopping center will be 80,000 square feet. Taco Mac is 20,000 square feet. So, instead of a step down, it's a step up. The other thing is that the flattening of this ridge will have severe effects on erosion, runoff, and will create water problems that are very difficult to resolve. And in fact, if you look at many of the new developments that are going on in West Cobb, water is a big issue. And finally, I want to also comment that one of our engineers who will speak next, Tony Dopkin, a brilliant man who has spent hours and hours studying this, has found out that in order to build this shopping center and have a park, there will be slopes. You'll drive up to a parking lot. Thank you very much for hearing what I had to say, and I hope that you will stick with your original intention, which was to deny this project.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Herbert Dopkin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Tony Depkin. I live in Chestnut Ridge across from Dallas Highway and across Dallas Highway from OB AD. First, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for voting down five to nothing the original Z-80, Z-98 plan in May. And I encourage you to do the same for the new plan, OB-80. I'm going to be presenting a number of engineering considerations. I even have a three-dimensional model of the critical space, which is right behind outlet, outlet, outlot number two. And I'd be happy to show it to you or discuss these things further with either you gentlemen or someone who you designate. I've also been down, we've talked with the Cobb DOT engineers, and someone else will talk about that in more detail. Okay, could I have the first picture there? This is a picture of Z-98 right here. The red line is residential. Seventy-seven percent of the perimeter of Z-98 is surrounded by residential. Just this black line over on the side is the commercial area, which is, as everyone knows by now, Taco Mac's strip mall and a huge Lowe's. Notice everywhere else is residential. Garrison Ridge, Heritage Oaks, Heritage Oaks, Three Houses, and Chestnut Ridge. Now, you've already heard that 90% of all the people in these three developments signed petitions against Z-98 and for any commercial development on that lot. Two percent were for it and seven percent either we couldn't reach or abstained. Now, any commercial rezoning of OB AD is not consistent with the county's future land use plan. And I want to show you again the perimeter here. Seventy-seven percent is residential. Now, residential housing could easily be built on OB AD. And we repeatedly told Commissioner Weatherford, Skip Gunther, and Columbia that we would consider any residential development, including RSLs. And our requests were not honored. I'm a retired engineer with 40 years of practical experience, and I have Columbia's latest drawings. If I could have the second figure up. And this is very much a non-professional engineering drawing, but it really does show the points. Unlike Parkside, which is a relatively flat land, OB AD is a very steep hill. And I can show you that very readily here. This is a drawing, this is the height of the land. This is a side view, and this is west to east. Here is the present slope of the land, this line right here, the dark line. What will happen is, this is the finished product according to the Columbia drawings. I have them here if anybody wants to look at them as well, it's a model. And this is after blasting, and blasting will definitely be required, and lots of it. And this is before blasting. About 400,000 tons of rock and dirt will have to be moved from here to there. And according to Columbia's borehole drawings, on their drawings, they will have to bore in many places, the deepest bore being 42 feet. That's four stories high worth of rock. It's like cutting a cut on a big highway. This is not small scale. Five hundred, sorry, 400,000 tons, 20,000 truckloads. Most of the dirt, however, will probably be moved. They'll probably have a rock crusher on site to move the rock from here to put it there. To make a long story short, they will cut the east half of the hill away, or is from here to here. That's right through the top of the mountain, 1,100 feet, right through the top of the hill. Not one side, one foot of the other, right through the top. And they'll fill in this valley over here. This is 995 feet to get the average of 1040, which is their plan. I can show you the drawings. Okay, could I have the next slide, please? And this is the last one. Are we going to get it in or not?
No.
Okay, we, we'll, we'll, we'll do it this way. This is a photograph.
Mr. Depkin, your, your time has expired.
Okay, may I make the conclusion? This is the before and after view of the blasting. This is a 30-foot cliff over Dallas Highway.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Alan Sella.
Good morning. My name is Alan Sella. I too am a member of Garrison Ridge. I'm here to talk about case OB-080. But I'll be brief. I only have one point to bring up this morning, and I believe it's a point that's never been brought to the attention of the Commission before today. The subject is traffic, but you've already heard all of the previous concerns about the higher volume of traffic and the congestion that will be induced by the Columbia-proposed development from the Dallas Highway side. What I don't believe is brought, has been brought to the attention of the Commission is the amount of cut-through traffic. Garrison Ridge has two entrances. The one that everybody focuses on is the entrance point, the ingress and the egress from Dallas Highway that'll cut through the middle of the existing Taco Mac and Lowe's. And of course, if this proposal goes through, the shopping center on the opposite side. However, Garrison Ridge has two entrance points. On the northwest backside, we have an entrance that is accessible from Barrett Parkway. So, my wife and I have lived in Garrison Ridge subdivision for 25 years now. And what we have experienced and have observed is ever since the Taco Mac and Lowe's went in, we get a increased volume of cut-through traffic from southbound traffic on Barrett Parkway, cutting through the back of our entrance so that they can make an unsignalized turn into Taco Mac and Lowe's. From my perspective, I, I think it's easily, easy to predict that adding a much larger and a second shopping center on the opposite side of that Garrison Commons entrance point is just going to simply induce a higher volume of cut-through traffic through our neighborhood, even more so than what Taco Mac and Lowe's has already induced itself. So, for that reason, there's been many reasons that has been brought to the attention of this Commission, but, and traffic has been one of them. But I would ask that you also consider the higher volume of cut-through traffic through Garrison Ridge as another opposing point to this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Gabriela Coroneos.
Honorable Commissioners, my comments are related to OB AD today and related to traffic, which I know is a subject that you really don't like, but I must share these thoughts with you.
Did you share your name for us?
Oh, yes, Gabriela Coroneos.
Thank you.
And I'm from Heritage Oaks.
Thank you.
Okay. Traffic congestion already exists within the area, particularly at Barrett Parkway and Dallas, and it's about to skyrocket. OB AD will attract 3,100 new car trips per day to this already heavily congested area. Parkside Shopping Center, one mile to the west, which opens next month, is anticipating 4,000 new car trips daily. That's 7,100 additional cars and trucks that will flood our area with no allowance for future infrastructure improvements. Last week, I met with Amy Diaz and Jane Strickland at Cobb DOT. Cobb DOT's only recommendation for OB AD was to widen Garrison Commons to three lanes with four lanes at the Dallas Highway light. We ask that this recommendation be required, be a required stipulation in the OB case before the December 20th vote. This DOT recommendation alone gives insight as to how this one development will greatly impact and change the quiet nature of the existing Garrison Commons subdivision. No changes were recommended to Old Dallas Road across Dallas Highway heading towards the Chestnut Ridge subdivision. It's still two lanes. The opposed, the proposed Garrison Commons complex doesn't fit the requirements to be a commercial node according to the land use plan. The property is outside the defined, existing commercial node. It goes beyond the residential commercial node cutoff delineated by Lowe's Taco Mac to the east. No changes were recommended at Heritage Oaks entrance. No light, no merge lanes, nothing. This will lead to unbearable backups and U-turns possibly for us with thousands of new car trips added daily. Heritage Oaks residents and school buses risk getting broadsided by increased traffic on a 15-degree downhill grade from OB AD. Waiting until someone is killed is too late to fix this. Many discussions have taken place with the county over the years regarding a light to no avail. Funny how Parkside was able to get a new light just west of Dallas and Castile to help allow customers to access their commercial property. Garrison Roads, Commons Road is the only truck entrance for large 18-wheeler rigs entering Lowe's because of the tight turns elsewhere. With OB AD, we will have a mixture of large rigs and small trucks going not only into Lowe's complex, but into OB AD. This traffic will be combined with passenger cars from shoppers and the cars and school buses of residents at Garrison Ridge trying to get in and out of their community. All this traffic will result in the traffic chokeholds at Garrison Commons light that will back up to the public's target light and then beyond to the Baris Dallas intersection and downhill to Heritage Oaks. The letter of stipulations contains no language as to restricting delivery times, trash pickup, et cetera. OB AD is boarded on three sides by three subdivisions and several private homes. OB AD is a site plan that is unworkable because the site's topography does not allow any future curb cuts to be added later as congestion grows. The mediated settlement plan, plan to be voted on you by December 20th was unofficially floated around before the May vote, in fact, back in March, but never filed by Columbia with the county. Everyone at Garrison Ridge, Chestnut Ridge, and Heritage Oaks was as opposed to it then as they are now. The so-called park is an empty wooded lot, which is where a deep buffer would have been required anyway, but with all the land being removed and flattened, many of the trees in this park area will be torn down and new trees planted. We, West Cobb, homeowners also have constitutional rights that county officials ought to recognize, and we ask you to vote no to OB AD. A couple of other observations. Home Depot, Walgreens, and Pikes, they have two traffic lights and five egresses or curb cuts. cuts. Lowe's Publix, two traffic lights, six egresses. Target Staples Burger King, three traffic lights, seven egresses. OB-80, one traffic light, two egresses, with only one way to make a left turn going east onto Dallas Highway. And we anticipate that people trying to get out of this-
Ms. Coroneos, thank you.
Thank you.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much for your time, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Same to you.
The last speaker is Christine Dawson.
Good morning, Chairman Lee and county commissioners. My name is Christine Dawson, and I would like to offer some of my thoughts regarding case OB-80, formerly Z-98, a proposed rezoning at the northwest corner of Dallas Highway and Garrison Commons. I own my home at 136 Infantry Way in Garrison Ridge. Before purchasing my home, just over three years ago, I conducted careful research on my house, the neighborhood, and the area. Among the items I reviewed were the USGS topographic maps to determine my house's elevation above Mud Creek and the locations of the nearest fire hydrant and fire station. I visit the neighborhood at different times of the day and on different days of the week to determine how busy or quiet the streets were. I noticed that the Collins property, the subject of OB-80, at the entrance to my potential new neighborhood, was for sale, and I investigated its zoning. I was satisfied that no development would impinge on my quality of life or enjoyment of my new home when I found it was zoned R-20 for residential development. Furthermore, the county's comprehensive land use plan called for it to remain suburban residential in character. I did my research, and I purchased my home with the knowledge that my investment would be safe from undesirable development nearby. I was the historic preservation officer in a county planning department for nine years, and one of our goals was to provide applicants with predictability in the decisions that were made regarding permits, land development plans, and the like. Zoning codes provide a significant measure of predictability to property owners regarding the types of development and uses that are permitted on their and others' properties. After all, a lot of money, people's livelihoods, is tied up in real estate. The predictability of decisions made by governing bodies regarding real estate is vitally important to the stability of those investments. As I said, I did my research, and I relied upon the assigned zoning of my own and the Collins properties in my decision-making process. Therefore, a change in the zoning to this property is not only inappropriate for reasons to which others have and will testify, but it removes the elements of predictability and reliability in Cobb County land use decisions. If I cannot rely upon Cobb County to uphold its own land use policies and plans, I and many others will not be inclined to purchase property or otherwise invest in Cobb County. While some doubt Mr. Collins's so-called right to sell his property for the highest possible price, which per the United States Supreme Court is not a right, what about my rights as a property owner? Cobb County presumably has formulated land use policies and plans, including zoning codes, in order to provide a framework for orderly, predictable development. If the property owners of Cobb County cannot rely upon the county's plans and policies, why does the planning division exist? Why would anyone purchase property here if there's no predictability? Most people's homes are their largest single investment, and the rezoning of the Collins property will jeopardize the value of hundreds of homeowners' investments. I respectfully request that you deny the proposed rezoning, as it represents an inexplicable choice insofar as predictability and reliability are concerned. Thank you for your consideration.
We're done. Tab four is our consent agenda. Commissioners, we have one item to add, and that would be item 36, authorize a settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus X.K. Properties, Inc., Superior Court of Cobb County, Georgia Civil Action File Number 14-1-8010-48, and to authorize council to prepare and execute any necessary documents for the purpose of settling ongoing litigation. I'll bring that forward as a motion to add this item to the consent agenda. Is there a second? Any questions? Call a question. The motion carries 5-0. That is added to the consent. I will now bring forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as approved, as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Yes, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a comment. I received an email from a constituent this morning about item number 17, which is to authorize advertisement and solicitation of steel bids from interested parties for the purchase of an unmanned aerial system. I just want to highlight the fact that it is to authorize advertisement and solicitation of bids. It is not to purchase the UAS. And I think the article in the paper this morning indicated that it was to purchase, and it listed purchase price of $160,000. The county has not received any bids yet. This is just going out in advertising. In the discussions with staff, staff's going to obviously do all they can to get a UAS system that performs the duties that they're trying to do with it at the best possible price. So the number in there, the $160,000, is simply a potential cost. Obviously, staff's going to be looking to get it a lot lower. I know that there's some other drones out there. The gentleman that sent me the email this morning referenced drones considerably cheaper, and so I think just emphasize that this is to advertise, to purchase drone, and staff's not going out there and, you know, buying the Taj Mahal in drones, but there is specific things that we would like to be able to do.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Tab five, transportation. Nine items, Mr. August.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our first item is to approve a revised budget and schedule of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program funded primarily by the 2011 SPOS Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. The 2011 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Transportation Improvement Program was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on December 14, 2010, and approved by the voters in Cobb County on March 15, 2011. The revised budget for the 2011 SPOS tip includes all projects approved at the inception of the program, all previous board-approved new budget transfers and adjustments to various projects, and will be funded primarily with 2011 SPOS revenues and interest. As a further explanation, that's not included in your background, let me state this. Proposed budget update includes a reconciliation of all revenue received and projected to be received from outside sources, including GDOT, CID's, and interest earnings. This updating also includes corresponding reconciliation of all completed budget costs and an estimate to complete all remaining projects. Expense budgets have been reduced when savings from completed projects are realized and increased if necessary for projects not yet completed. The net result of these reconciliations is a reduction to the 2011 SPOS tip budget in the amount of $777,000. So we request the Board of Commissioners approve the revised budget and schedule for the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program funded primarily by the 2011 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioners, I bring this forward in form of a motion as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any comments?
I just have one quick question. Jim's long technical talk was as a result of my questions to him yesterday. Just kind of summarize. I received some questions as to why we were back in the 2011 SPOS, and basically what Jim was telling everybody was that as projects finished up, that were started then, as many folks have seen in our consent agenda, a lot of times we'll have budgets where we have deductive amounts from the actual cost. Well, those monies have to go back into the 2011 SPOS, and so as those monies go back into the 2011 SPOS, the county can then go back and look at projects from the 2011 SPOS that couldn't have been done back then when there was no money. But you can't mix the 2011 and the 2016 SPOS, so that's kind of where this came from.
I think you cleared it up. Any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item two, please.
Item two is to adopt revised resolution to support funding of the Georgia Department of Transportation I-75 and Acres Mill Ramp Project in addition to the I-75 Northwest Corridor Managed Lane System Project. The Cumberland Community Improvement District and the Georgia Department of Transportation have jointly identified a capital transportation improvement to supplement the I-75 Northwest Corridor Managed Lane System Project, which is currently under construction and scheduled for completion in 2018. The proposed transportation improvement consists of addition of an entrance/exit ramp and an operation, operating interchange located at I-75 and Acres Mill Road. We request the Board of Commissioners adopt a revised resolution to support funding of the Georgia Department of Transportation's I-75 and Acres Mill Road Ramp Project in addition to the I-75 Northwest Managed Lane System Project in an amount not to exceed $15 million contingent upon the funding commitments by the CID, the ARC, and the State Road and Toll Authority, and the identification of full project funding. Authorize the first $10 million of the unbudgeted 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program's excess revenue collected to be allocated to the local match for future federal, state, local, other funding category contingent upon the actual 2016 SPOS revenue collections exceeding the projected revenue budget, not to exceed an amount of funding actually contributed by the county, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve this agenda item, and as we've talked before, the necessity and the importance of this project, but unfortunately, the price has come in a little bit higher than anticipated, which is necessitating increase in the county's commitment.
Second. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item three, please.
Item three is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Georgia Development Partners LLC for pedestrian improvements on Little Willio Road Sidewalk Phase Two, Project Number E-7360, CCDOT Contract Number 000837. Little Willio Road Sidewalk Phase Two is an approved project in the sidewalk component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Georgia Development Partners, a savings to the project in an amount of $156,669.84, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Georgia Development Partners LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $156,669.84 for pedestrian improvements of the Little Willio Road Sidewalk Phase Two, Project Number E-7360, CCDOT Contract Number 000837. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hahn.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item four.
Item four is to authorize advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement and to authorize issuance of requests for proposals to procure required services. In the implementations of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program, the department anticipates awarding engineering contracts that could exceed $100,000 for various projects. The department requests authorizations to conduct a public hearing for these projects. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program, and further authorize issuance of requests for proposals or task order work authorizations to procure required services as shown in the attached list of upcoming projects for the first half of 2017.
Bringing this forward is the form of the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item five, please.
Item five is to approve Project Number X-2114-To-Number-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Heath and Lundbeck Engineers, Inc. for engineering design of Macedonia Road over Noses Creek, CCDOT Contract Number 000994. Macedonia Road over Noses Creek is an approved project in the Bridges and Culverts Component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X-2114-To-Number-O-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Heath and Lundbeck Engineers, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $220,594.64 for engineering design of Macedonia Road over Noses Creek, CCDOT Contract Number 000994. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item six, please.
Item six is to approve Project Number X-2802-To-Number-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Calix Engineers and Consultants for engineering design of schools on improvements on John Ward Road at Irwin Road. Chatham Hill Elementary School, CCDOT Contract Number 000992. John Ward Road at Irwin Road, Chatham Hill Elementary School is an approved project in the Schools on Improvements Component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X-2802-To-Number-O-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Calix Engineers and Consultants in an amount not to exceed $172,435 for engineering design of school zone improvements on John Ward Road at Irwin Road. Chatham Hill Elementary School, CCDOT Contract Number 000992. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hahn.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item seven.
This is to approve Change Order Number One to the contract with Brooks, Berry, and Haney and Associates to upgrade six additional intersections for traffic signals. Project Number E-5040, CCDOT Contract Number 000940. Traffic Signals is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Upgrades are underway, and Change Order Number Way, Number One to the contract with Brooks, Berry, Haney, and Associates in an amount not to exceed $174,645 is requested to add six additional intersections for traffic signal upgrades. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to the contract with Brooks, Berry, Haney, and Associates in an amount not to exceed $174,645 to upgrade six additional intersections for traffic signals. Project Number E-5040, CCDOT Contract Number 000940. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Hahn.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item eight, please.
Item eight is to approve Project Number X-2520-To-Number-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for traffic engineering services for traffic signal timing, CCDOT Contract Number 001002. Traffic Signal Timing is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement. The department's adaptive traffic control system requires routine re-timing to optimize traffic signal operation and improve traffic flow. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X-2520-To-Number-One to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with AECom Technical Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $127,912 for traffic engineering services for traffic signal timing, CCDOT Contract Number 001002. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I'll bring this forward in a form of a motion as presented. I have a second. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item nine, please.
This item is to authorize procurement of traffic signal poles and mast arms for Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School, Project Number X-2804. Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School is an approved project in the Schools on Improvements Component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of traffic signal poles and mast arms in an amount not to exceed $16,260 for Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School, Project Number X-2804, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Earl.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Hey, Jim, on this project-
Yes, sir.
I had a neighbor ask the other day if there's going to be a D cell on the southbound Sandy Plains into this.
I'm not sure, but I can check. I don't know whether there wouldn't be, but I'll check.
Just send me this, send me something that I could forward on.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Tab six, Public Services Agency. Mr. Cannon.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager.
Thought we promoted you out of this.
We're getting, we're getting close. We're getting real close. We have four items today. Our first item today is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Gaskin Surveying Incorporated in amount not to exceed $187,700 to provide professional design and construction- construction administrative services for conversion of athletic fields to synthetic turf at Mud Creek Park, Hubert Park, and Terrell Mill Park. This comes under the 2016 SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Who wants to take this?
Motion to approve is presented.
Multiple seconds. Call the question.
Comment for clarification, Chairman.
Sure.
We have called the motion. Just for clarification from our conversation yesterday, will there be another agenda item that comes forward for this?
There will be. This agenda item, we're hiring the company to do the specs for us in all these fields. There will be an agenda item come forward when we select the turf company.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Agenda item number two.
The next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and deductive change order number one to the contract with Bartow Paving Company Incorporated with a credit in the amount of $21,048.15 for the asphalt paving and related services to resurface the parking lot and access roadways at the Cobb County Civic Center. This comes under the 2011 Park SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item three, please.
The next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Integrated and Nobility Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $425,770.9 for design build services with the construction of a splash pad feature at Swift Kentrell Park. This is a joint project with the City of Kennesaw, and this comes under the 2016 SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. I will say that we've worked jointly with the city staff to develop this plan, and this comes, and they passed this also, the city council.
Joint recommendation.
Yes, yes, sir.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, and look forward to this being implemented. It'd be a great addition to that area of the county. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. However, I cannot see Commissioner Weatherford using a splash pad.
I totally agree with what's better than the skate park bill. I hurt myself.
All right.
Item four.
The final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the contract with BD Construction Incorporated in amount not to exceed $28,635.23 for the construction services related to the replacement of concession restroom building at Traymore Park. This comes under the 2011 Park SPOS Program and ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Sorry about that, Commissioner Kupfer.
Thank you.
Tab seven, Sports Services. Ms. Sharon.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. On Base is the Enterprise Content Management System for Cobb County Government. In 2013, a contract was awarded to Harvest Technology Group, Inc., to upgrade the On Base Enterprise Content Management System. Subsequent change orders have been issued annually for professional services and software to implement projects prioritized by the On Base Executive Sponsors Group. Some of the projects planned this year will include expanding On Base use to 10 additional departments or divisions, continuation of the contract management rollout, and automation of records retention requirements compliance. We request this morning that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Five in an amount not to exceed $1,757,205 to the work agreement with Harvest Technology Group, Inc., for the On Base Enterprise Content Management System to fund additional projects and enhancements in 2017. Funding is available in the Capital Replacement Fund for the On Base project. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve this item just kind of as a note. This is the final year in the agreement with Harvest Technology Group in that IT will be bringing forward an agenda item in the future for the board to put out an RFP for continuation of the On Base service. So, motion to approve.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item two. Mr. Rita.
Mr. Hankerson. This first agenda item is for the 2016 construction of the Acworth-Kennesaw Health Facility. Request for Proposals was advertised by the Purchasing Department and the selected architect, design builder, John Spratlin, and the recommendation is the Board of Commissioners approve a design-build contract with John Spratlin and son in the amount not to exceed $670,89 to include design costs of $186,971, project fee costs of $225,000, and project general condition costs of $258,118 for a combined total of $670,89 for the new construction of the Acworth-Kennesaw Health Facility, a 2016 SPOS project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. Want to point out that this is for the design builder's initial portion, and we will come back to the board for approval of the construction costs after we have the guaranteed maximum price.
Commissioner Weatherford, just before I do that, the recommendation in the book is slightly different than what you just read. Is what you said more accurate, or is what in the book? For the record.
Okay, I'll read the rest of it. Only design builders' fee, the general conditions, and the design are included in the $670,89 and not the actual cost of construction. Once the guaranteed maximum price has been determined, a recommendation with the construction cost will be presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Weatherford.
And what do we anticipate the maximum to be for that?
We'll be back in about three, two to three months with that second agenda item.
And this is for the public's information, closing Kennesaw and Acworth Public Health Centers, which have been there for what? Forever? The two?
Right, for those, for the, it couldn't be on the old 41.
Right, okay. Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Want to recognize Mr. Virgil Moon who is here today from the communities, from the Health Department, helping us with this project. Thank you. Who's doing Agenda Item Number Three? You?
I have the second one. Third one for property. This is also the 2016 SPOS. It's for floor covering replacement at the East Cobb Senior Center, and we recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Southeastern Commercial Flooring, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $61,616.20 for floor covering replacement at the East Cobb Senior Center, 3332 Sandy Plains Road, Marietta, utilizing 2016 SPOS interior restoration funding. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, with pleasure, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab eight, Director Eaton.
Good morning, Chairman. Board of Commissioners, County Manager. Coming to you today, the authorized an agreement of Operational Security Systems, Inc., for an access entry system to Cobb County Police Precinct Number Two, Fire Station Number Twenty Two, security gates located at 4700 Offstair Road, to include procurement of necessary equipment, software, and professional services using the 2011 SPOS funds. On November eighth, 2016, the Board of Commissioners approved the installation of security fencing at those, at that location. In order to complete the secure, completely secure the facility access control is required for entry into the motorized vehicle gates. The Department of Public Safety in conjunction with Information Services Department administers the physical access control system in use throughout the public safety locations, and it's proposed that the same system and compatible hardware be installed at Cobb County Police Precinct Two, Fire Station Twenty Two gates in order to provide compatibility and standardization throughout facilities within public safety. Two other vendors were contacted for quotes on programming the system and responded with no bids due to lack of knowledge and experience on these existing system, and therefore I'm recommending the Board of Commissioners authorize the, an agreement with Operational Security Systems, Inc., in the amount of $18,363 for the procurement of an access entry system of the Cobb County Police Precinct Two and Fire Station Twenty Two security gates located at 4700 Offstair Road to include procurement of necessary equipment, software, and professional services using the 2011 SPOS funds and authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Easy for you, sir. Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Why do I keep messing up over here?
Must look like Bob today.
There you go.
Please. I only wish.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Tab nine, Director Johnson, one item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development here, representing community development, public safety, and the county attorney's office, as it relates to the board considering an alcohol district tailgating area and beverage vendor carts for SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta in compliance with a variety of codes that were, that are part of the Cobb County Code of, Code. In February, the Board of Commissioners approved Six dash one thirty-three and Six dash one thirty-four, which are the special provisions within certain mixed-use developments and tailgating, which allow for the open consumption, open sale of alcohol in specified areas. And on November twenty-second of, of last month, we introduced the concept to you of what the request is from the Battery Atlanta for their open container area as well as tailgating area. Let me briefly go through some of what was presented to you last month. The open container area you'll see on the map here, the areas in blue will be the areas where the open sale and open consumption of alcohol would be allowed. The red dots are the maximum number of beverage cart locations that would be allowed. That does not mean there'll be a beverage cart at every single one of the events there. It's just all of them, depending on the type of event, they would need a different flow, and therefore, these would be where the approved vendor carts for the, the various, the various events that occur on site. The area in orange is, of course, the SunTrust Park, and that is under a different license, and it's not part of this particular agenda item, sir. The second graphic here shows the proximity between the tailgating area and the Battery Atlanta. The tailgating area is a, a open paved lot on Circle Seventy-Five. This is a good location for the tailgating area because people who wish to partake in events at the tailgating area would not need to actually physically cross a road in order to get to the park because there'll be two pedestrian bridges to safely get people from point A to point B in order to see the events at SunTrust Park. Exhibit three here, sir, shows the tailgating area itself. It shows the areas where trash and recycling will be, restroom, portable restrooms, areas for grilling, and as well as areas where signs will be put up placing the rules for, for using the tailgate area and what some of the rules are in regard to, to consumption of alcohol in that particular area. A packet was provided to you that shows a number of policies that will be in place for the open container area. Those were all included in the master declaration and covenants, so any business that is going to be going into the Battery Atlanta would need to abide by these covenants and restrictions that are placed upon that, and these contain all of the restrictions for the open sale and consumption of alcohol. We reviewed it, and it is in full compliance with our code. The locations I just mentioned were shown on the map. A valid photo ID will be required for all purchases. Identifiable cups will be used to facilitate enforcement, as well as a wristband system will be used to facilitate enforcement, to ensure that it'll be easy for the public and private security in the area in order to easily see who has been checked for, for the ability to purchase alcohol and if they have a cup in their hand showing so. Most of the security in this area will be a collaboration between Cobb County Public Safety, the Cobb County Sheriff's Office, as well as the private security that will be hired by the Battery Atlanta. In the tailgating area, just for a point, there will be no alcohol actually served in the tailgating area. This would only be an open consumption area where an individual would be, would be able to bring their own alcohol in order to consume as, while they're grilling some burgers or grilling some hot dogs or whatnot while they're there. Again, we have reviewed all of the policies, and they are in full compliance with the county code. The security of this particular area will be handled by the private security for the Battery, and as I mentioned, all of the facilities will be provided to ensure that people who do choose to consume there will have the appropriate recycling, trash, and restrooms that will be necessary in order to have this function appropriately. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Our request today is for the board to approve the alcohol district tailgating area and beverage vendors, beverage vending carts for the SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta in compliance with our code. We do have an individual, Mr. Jason Domer, who is here. He's the Associate General Counsel of the Battery Atlanta, and he is here in case I am not able to answer any questions.
Thanks. So, what I'm going to do is bring forward a motion to approve the agenda item as presented, get a second, and then we'll have discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for any comments or questions?
Don't we have?
No. Commissioner Kupfer.
Yes, just one point of clarification. I know you and I spoke yesterday with respect to the wristbands, Dana. If we can go to that last slide that you just hit on. The last bullet says tailgating in non-approved areas to be managed by SunTrust Park, the Battery Atlanta security. Is it possible that there could be tailgating outside of the tailgating areas?
There would be no approved tailgating areas outside of that one area in yellow that was shown, and the purpose for that statement is if there is other tailgating that's occurring, is there any unapproved tailgating occurring in private lots that the brave security would handle that situation?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or question? I think you did a great job, Dana, from where we were, where we are, getting all the partners together and clarifying this for this, for us, so thank you for leading that. Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. That takes us to tab ten. We had some conversation yesterday concerning the item on tab ten. Conversation, the item was brought forward by the State Court Judges and their administrative staff. There was some questions brought up yesterday as to whether or not this could be deferred to the January time period and still be able to be subject to an effective date that is calendar year 2016. I have been advised that is a possibility, that is a possibility if the board deems to take this item up in January, they can in fact move forward on the item with a effective date or a beginning date that was in part of the 2016 calendar, therefore, the effective date is actually the marker that begins when this, this policy would take effect. That's correct, Mr. County Manager? Thank you. And the courts have been advised, and as such, this item will be deferred to January. It'll be brought forward by the county manager at appropriate time for the consideration to board sometime in the future. Tab eleven, our second public comment.
There are four speakers signed up for this last section. The first is Melissa O'Brien.
My name is Melissa O'Brien, and I represent West Cobb Advocate. Members who participate in our Facebook page are overwhelmingly in opposition to Other Business Eighty. It is no secret that since the economy has picked up, that developers have seen West Cobb as a cash cow for development. We have stood before you numerous times asking you to scale back the size and scope of developments because of the sheer volume of requests inundating our community with traffic and the loss of our quality of life. You, as a collective board, cannot continue to look at each individual rezoning application as if it were in a vacuum. That is why a comprehensive land use plan exists and why it is not merely a guide, as we have been told by our commissioner, but rather a roadmap for responsible development. The residents of this community have a growing discontent for the lack of adherence to a comprehensive land use plan and Cobb County Code. For years, we, the people, have used what is our only reference point when purchasing property to assist us in our home buying decisions. The land use plan and zoning designations are a fundamental tool we use when purchasing property in this county. The residents of Garrison Ridge, Heritage Oaks, and Chestnut Ridge did, did just that. They looked to see what it was zoned around them before making a decision about where to purchase their home, for most of them, their primary investment. To ignore the text amendment that was placed on this parcel and dramatically upzone is denying existing homeowners their constitutional rights. It dramatically changed- It dramatically changes the character and keeping of their community, the financial and emotional incentive for purchasing their homes and wanting to reside in Cobb County. This Board cannot continue to ignore the rights of existing property owners merely because each individual owner does not have the financial ability or the will to fight litigation. It is your job to protect the citizens of this county, and your tools exist in the form of code and the land use plan. Let's look at both sides, too. Mr. Collins has made a decision to buy land that was zoned residential. No one disputes his right to build on his land as zoned. Commissioner Weatherford and mediation removed the more appropriate residential senior living component. Mr. Collins' decision to purchase residential land that is largely granite was his financial speculation and his alone. When the proposed text amendment capped the commercial note adjacent to his property, we were unable to find any letters in opposition from Mr. Collins from the proposed change. Now, we are expected to believe that Mr. Collins' property rights are more, have more value than the rights of adjacent homeowners, that the land use plan does not apply to Mr. Collins. Since when is it the county's job to ensure the homeowner's highest price for their land? Why is it that the county can spend thousands of dollars on taxpayer money creating a land use plan, and that in order to ensure the county upholds it, the general public has to hire an attorney? Why can't the county spend our taxpayer dollars devising what it calls a mediated settlement that does not allow the adjacent homeowners to be present to state their case and ultimately deliver a plan that benefits both the developer and Mr. Collins and still harms the quality of life and the value of the property of the adjacent homeowners, including a variance that allows a code, that, to a code to allow developments on Sunday? I did research about automobile-oriented neighborhoods. Columbia Property likes, Columbia Properties likes to tout that commercial developments benefit adjacent landowners, but it actually depends on the type of business and the type of neighborhood. In fact, commercial properties do better in areas where mass transit exists. We have none on Dallas Highway. They also do better where there is no, not long stretches of sidewalks and two-lane highways. Further, while high-end improves home values, that is not the product that Columbia Property delivers. That is what they promised our community two years ago, but what we received were off-price retailers. The truth is, the type of commercial pockets, the upscale lifestyle centers Columbia Properties promised to create, is not realistic in our community. We don't have the demographic for it, and the way our community is spread out is not conducive for it. In fact, we don't need it, as was proven on Black Friday, when both the avenues and the Target shopping centers were less than active. So the question is, whose side are you on? Are you here to uphold the county's land use plan and codes and the property values and the quality of life for the two hundred and seventy-four adjacent property owners? Are you siding with the developers once again? We have been told by our Commissioner that he must follow the law, so let's do that if it means the county challenges this in court. We have the land use plan and the code, which clearly states this type of, where this type of development should go. If we don't have that, then how can anyone purchase land with confidence in Cobb County anymore? And why have rezoning? If this Board is not the final arbitrator, then let's change the process so everyone can understand the endgame. The citizens of West Cobb are ready for you to stand up for the land use plan and for the rights of existing residents. We, the taxpayers of Cobb County, want you to spend our tax dollars to defend the land use plan and to protect our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Dawn Asa.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Dawn Asa, nineteen-year resident of Garrison Ridge Subdivision in West Cobb, treasurer and a longtime member of our HOA Board. I'm here to urge the Commissioners to vote against other Business Item Eighty next Tuesday, which, of course, is the mediation plan that has been achieved stemming from last year's Z ninety-eight zoning case. There's absolutely no question that the overwhelming majority of homeowners in the three subdivisions that surround the property in question are against this mediation proposal, as well as a wider spectrum of homeowners across West Cobb. Before the mediation plan was even negotiated, one would think that some feedback would have been sought from the homeowners who would be most affected by this case. No one from Cobb County ever sought any input from us. In fact, we were excluded by the court from even offering any input, as well as in the mediation hearing. Early on, we homeowners in Garrison Ridge stated that we are not in any way trying to impede the sale of the twenty-four acres of land owned by Mr. Collins. To the contrary, in two thousand and fourteen, the Board of Directors of Garrison Ridge received an invitation from a realtor and a residential developer who was looking at the Collins property to develop it residentially. The developer proposed to build high-end homes and wanted to know if our subdivision had any objections to their plans. Our Board had no concerns. In fact, we believe that such a development might benefit our subdivision and possibly increase our home values. Those who are telling you that there has been no interest in the Collins property for, except for commercial development, are simply not being truthful with you. We have firsthand knowledge that there is interest in that property. Last January, District One Planning Commissioner Skip Gunther met in my family room with about a dozen residents from the three adjacent subdivisions. Skip Gunther introduced to us the zoning concept of an open-space community. He suggested that such a development would allow homes to be built on that property and likely would save areas where there are known Civil War earthworks. This was a very acceptable option to all of us. Of course, its viability is contingent upon Mr. Collins, his being willing to negotiate a fair selling price for his property, which, for his entire lengthy ownership, has been zoned R twenty and for which he has paid taxes at that rate. Now, the argument has been made to us that building homes on the ridge is going to totally flatten it anyway, so that we ought to just get over it. While we acknowledge that building homes on the ridge will destroy some of the trees and some of the existing land features, the destruction that would be caused by building homes is absolutely nothing compared to what Columbia Properties proposes to do to build a shopping center. Building homes on the ridge will not generate thirty-two hundred cars into our area every day, along with massive delivery trucks. Building homes on the ridge will not create a profusion of left turns and U-turns to access the area. Building homes will not necessitate building a detention pond that is the size of a, of a football field. We urge you to reject this mediation proposal. Those of us who live within the shadow of the ridge can also argue, we have constitutional rights regarding the protection of our properties. Dropping this massive commercial development in the center of an area that has been zoned residentially for decades will hurt us. And for that very reason, the county departments who studied this issue last spring all recommended denying the zoning proposal. And the Planning Commission, when they looked at all of the recommendations from the county departments, as well as their own insights, unanimously denied the proposal. Eleven hundred residents signed opposition petitions.
Mr. Asa, your time has expired.
Thank you, sir. Again, we urge you not to settle for this mediation proposal. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Beldon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. My name is Mark Beldon. I'm speaking about OB eighty, which seems to be the topic of the day. I live in District One in Heritage Oaks that borders Mr. Collins' land on the west side. I've lived in Heritage Oaks for twenty years and in Cobb County for thirty-one. I am against this proposed settlement of the lawsuit filed by Columbia and Mr. Collins versus Cobb County. We are appreciative of your unanimous denial of Columbia's application last May. I wanted to point out some things, though. If the Commission votes to accept this mediated settlement, the following precedents will be established for our area as well as all of Cobb County. Converting Mr. Collins' land from R twenty to NAC is not in compliance with both the twenty-thirty land use plan and the draft version of the twenty-forty plan. This particular intersection of Dallas Highway and Garrison Commons is explicitly called out as a text amendment in the twenty-thirty plan as the end of a commercial node. Mr. Collins' land is twenty-four acres surrounded on three sides by established residential subdivisions bordered by Garrison Commons Drive. Two previous District One Commissioners inserted the language to protect the Garrison Ridge and Zachary Wood subdivisions and Mud Creek. The language was inserted as a step-down intensity from the Lowe's and Public Centers. In April, staff comments on Z ninety-eight were clear. Quote, "Cobb County has been very consistent and careful with rezoning actions on Dallas Highway to limit commercial development to defined nodes." So why is the current Taco Mac NRC on only one side of the Collins property being used as a reference point to justify this change from R twenty? Garrison Commons is a two-lane curved entry road from Garrison Ridge, into Garrison Ridge and Zachary Wood subdivisions. It's not an arterial road, and the intersection with Dallas Highway is not a commercial node. The fact that there is a traffic signal there does not make it a commercial node nor justify new commercial development next to it. Garrison Commons was actually the result of an easement agreement in nineteen ninety-five between Mr. Collins and John Whelan Holmes, who was the previous owner of the Lowe's land. This road gave Mr. Collins more direct access to Dallas Highway from his driveway and more direct access for the Zachary Wood subdivision. Rezoning his land would mean that the county is abandoning the widely-accepted concept of only putting commercial developments at true established commercial nodes. This concept has long been followed in West Cobb, and if abandoned, every commercial developer now has a reason to pursue new retail centers at non-commercial nodes. There are four residential parcels, all that are connected directly across Dallas Highway from Mr. Collins' land. If this mediated settlement is accepted, what is stopping from one or all four of these homeowners from selling out to a developer for rezoning to commercial? These four homeowners could sue the county in a heartbeat and based on the fact that the BOC overrode the land use plan directly across Dallas Highway from them. Then anyone can likely see the domino effect westward on Dallas Highway as other residential owners sell out to commercial developers. What I'm describing is not speculation. This is exactly what happened in East Cobb in the late eighties and early nineties. A large majority of West Cobb homeowners that I know decided to live out here to escape the sprawl and congestion. We've heard recently that Mr. Collins has indeed approached more than once to sell his property for residential development in the past three years. For some reason, he chose not to move forward. There is ample U.S. and Georgia Supreme Court case law supporting the county's legal position in zoning cases. The citizens of Cobb deserve their rights to be defended in zoning challenges to the established land use plan. Mr. Collins, Columbia, and their attorney have the burden to show by clear and convincing evidence that the existing R twenty zoning causes them a detriment or a taking and is not substantially related to the public health and safety and welfare. The county does not have this burden, so a settlement makes little sense and only encourages more lawsuits. I respectfully ask that all of you vote against this mediated settlement next Tuesday and send it back to the trial judge. Thank you.
The last speaker is Kelly Gambrell.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Gambrell, and I'm president of People Looking After Neighborhoods. Cobb County staff are highly qualified and unbiased in their analysis of rezoning applications as they strictly consider code and land use compliance to render the recommendation of approval or denial. Rezoning application Z ninety-eight of two thousand and fifteen had ninety-seven thousand square feet of commercial with RSL at a density of five-point-oh-four-three units per acre. Staff recommended denial, and it was upheld by this Board, five-oh, in May of two thousand and sixteen. Reasons for denial, per staff, are the applicant's rezoning proposal, quote, "will not permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties will have an adverse effect on the properties to the north and west," is not in conformity with the policy and intent of the Cobb County Comp Plan, which delineates this property as being in low-density residential. A mixture of commercial and senior living residential, neither of which is compatible with the Cobb County Comp Plan as it is presented. The requested RSL is allowed in LDR, however, the overall residential development should be compatible with neighboring residential uses. Most of the proposal is not in compliance with the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan. OB eighty is a result of a mediated settlement to prevent further litigation, not a court decision. Questions asked to the extent staff analysis were considered in this mediation arise as staff has recommended denial of the original application. The mediated site plan reflects ninety thousand square feet of commercial, which is not allowed, and the originally proposed RSL component, which is compatible, completely removed. Within the last few weeks, residents have received an email response from Mr. Weatherford pertaining to their opposition to OB eighty. The second-to-last sentence in Mr. Weatherford's email states, quote, "If you would look at the facts, then I would welcome any solutions you may think of." These are the facts. The county has a county land use plan and has established where residential and commercial should be built. The county has a longstanding practice of step-down zoning within a commercial node. Step-down zoning places the most intensive use at the middle of the commercial center and then steps down the intensity as it transitions to residential. RSL has been used to complete the transition from commercial to residential. Chestnut Ridge, which is located across from the parcel, is an RSL that transitions from the commercial node on the south of Dallas Highway to residential. The node on the north side of Dallas Highway, starting at Barrett Parkway, is an example of step-down zoning without an RSL. Publix, which is designated as a CAC, is ninety-five thousand six hundred square feet. The end of the node contains the eighteen thousand seven hundred square-foot Garrison Ridge Shopping Center, zoned NRC, and adjacent to Garrison Ridge subdivision. OB eighty requests this Board remove the NRC shopping, approve an NRC shopping center, which is almost five times the square footage of the Garrison Ridge Shopping Center. In comparison, the square footage proposed in OB eighty is almost the same as the Publix, which is in an area designated as a CAC and is located at the corner of two four-lane roads. Mr. Weatherford's last sentence in his email states, quote, "I must follow the law and not subject taxpayers to lawsuits, et cetera, thereby letting a court decide instead of elected representatives." However, Mr. Weatherford, you are failing to acknowledge the financial burdens you have placed upon the residents adjacent to undeveloped land. They are unable to write off the financial woes caused unto them to stand up and remind you, our elected official, that it is your responsibility to protect our rights as well. The property owner is not facing substantial detriment if OB eighty is not approved. The land is still developable as zoned or RSL. In addition, it should be noted that in OB eighty, the buffer adjacent to the residential is a passive park, which will be accessible to the public and allow a steady stream of visitors into private backyards. When the avenues of West Cobb were mediated, a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot undisturbed buffer was required. While the buffer has remained undisturbed, it still fails to provide privacy as litter, noise, and light pollution still impact those residents on Rambo Lane. Disregarding the land use plan, an inconsistent policy has placed the county at legal risk as reflected in the number of constitutional challenges to zoning decisions. The Board of Commissioners is supposed to be the legal governing body pertaining to the laws and codes established by Cobb County. We request you uphold these standards and not mock their relevance to those who call Cobb County their home. Thank you.
Brad, I just figured out, if I turn my mic off, my speaker works. But that's, that's, I can hear better when I turn my mic off. Useless information, since I won't be here in a week, so. We're heading off to tab twelve. Appointments, we got several on here. It should be noted that some of these are being brought forward by the Chairman at the request of staff for procedural-type processes, so just because it indicates my name doesn't necessarily mean that I'm personally bringing it forward. The first one, Genon One, is the Board of Commissioners to approve the appointment of pilot members to the import advisory to fill a two-year term to expire October sixth. 6, 2018. And that pilot member is who? Thomas Hollinger. No, there's two. There's Thomas, there's Rick, and Susan Delgado. Susan Delgado, Thomas Hollinger, and Rick Zap Patty. Those were brought forward by staff that oversees and manages the Airport Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. The second item is brought forward. Again, this is a procedural process from the Hospital Authority of Cobb County. You'll see a number of posts being, there's 12698. Recommendation, the Board of Commissioners to approve the appointments to Hospital Authority of Cobb County, post 12698, for term ballots to expire August 7, as reflected in the Agenda item. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, question for the Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the Hospital Authority selecting the three persons that are provided for each post?
Well, I tell you what, you bring up a great point, and I apologize. Mr. Cobb Manager, let's move this, and this is my staff that brought this forward, so my apologies. So we're supposed to be approving one person from each of the three, and we haven't done that. I can bring forward a motion, if you would like to consider it today. The motion would be to present Ford Dickpens, Post 1, Michael Goodman is Post 2, Stephen Wilson, Post 6, Wallace Coopwood, Post 8, and Roy Vander Slice, Post 9. I can bring those forward as a motion as our selection to each of these posts for the Hospital Authority. If there's a second to that, first.
I would prefer.
Second.
I would prefer we wait until.
Okay. I thought we had taken an informal survey, and that there was some kind of a table Agenda item 2 till the 22nd, okay? And I'll come by and talk to each of the commissioners and get their comments on that. Good catch, Commissioner.
Thank you.
No, I don't. Withdraw the motion.
How do we rescind them?
What?
Does he have to rescind the motion? He had a motion.
Same concept in item. All right. So Item 1, let's go back to Agenda 1-1. And I know I'm going way out of order, but that's what we take in court. So Agenda 1-1, we're also supposed to select one person. I'm not prepared to make that recommendation. I don't think any of the other board members are. So I'm going to ask that we also, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we defer Agenda 1 and Item 2 to the December 22nd.
Second.
Okay.
Second, yes, I did.
Yeah, he's second.
Don't we have to rescind the vote on Item 1? We've already voted on it.
I don't know. Pardon me?
I think that, under the procedure, if the board can sense to it that you can make the agreement that you just, motion that you've just brought.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone to the 22nd. Second, call a question. The motion carries 5-0. It relates to Item 1. Item 2, we're going to make a motion to move it to the December 22nd Commission meeting. There's been a second. Commissioner Weatherford, call a question. That motion carries 5-0. Agenda 3 is to authorize submission of three names to the Hospital Authority names for consideration for appointment to Kennesaw Hospital Authority to fill the expired post. This procedure is a little different than the other ones inasmuch as we present three names. These names were presented to the board as to be included into this earlier, so this is basically to move these forward, these three names forward for their consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a comment?
Yes, there is comment. Commissioner, as we've discussed, I can't support this item.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Do they pick one of these three?
Yeah. The way, no, the way this runs, the way this works for this particular board is we submit three names, they select one of those three, or they can defer, they could decide not to select any three. They advise us, we would then present a second group of three at which they were required to pick one from that group. This is separate than what is done at Cobb Hospital. And Commissioner Oats noted he can't support this.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Cooper asked what my concern was, and it's just I don't support all the names on here. Historically with the Hospital Authorities, we continue to get the same names coming back, okay? And I just think that this board has the responsibility to put different names forward.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call a question. That motion carries 4-1, with Commissioner Oats in opposition. I'm sorry for the confusion, folks. Item 4, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Peggy Poole to the Public Library Board and thank her for her service through the years. She's a definite asset to the board and take pride and pleasure in reappointing her.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Agenda 5, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Wynne McGurty to the Recreation Board. She, too, is a great asset and has worked very hard with the board members and staff on our parks bond list, and I want to thank her as well and make a motion to reappoint her.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Number 6, this is Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thanks. I would like to reappoint Amy Rowe to the Airport Advisory Board and thank her, too, for her two years of service and look forward to working with her on that board for the next two years.
Third, second.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 7, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I would like to appoint, under District 3, Representative Alice Summerhour, who has served on the board, the 1% Sploes Citizens Oversight Committee, for several years as District 2 appointment. With the new lines coming in in January, she will now be in District 3, and I would, I take pride as well in appointing her under District 3, as one of my previous appointments had to resign. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Alice Summerhour to the 1% Sploes Oversight Committee.
Second.
Yes, sir. Just in case someone knows about the Sploes Oversight Committee, Alice is already on it, but she's under District 2 and with the new maps. You can see that. All right, second.
Chairman. We have a motion and a second, right? Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 8, number 8. This is to bring forward the announcement of the Workforce Development Board members of Valerie Carter, Mark Templeton, Dennis Winslow, and Yvonne Byers to the Workforce Development Board for three-year terms, byers in December 30, November 20, 1988.
Sure. I know that this doesn't require a vote, but I'm just, does this fill all the slots on that board? The only reason I'm asking is because this is a chairman's appointment, as you know, with a new chairman coming in, if it's filling up the board, then that's not leaving any slots for the incoming chairman.
These new names come from the organization. I don't.
Okay.
This is more of a process.
All right, that's why I was asking the question.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Just announce it. Joanne, item 9.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint.
Announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to announce the reappointment of Carlton Stock to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. He is a definite asset to that board, and I appreciate his service through the years.
Thank you.
And.
Goodbye. So Tab 13 is, Commissioner comments, right? Somebody?
Yes. Yes.
Right? Goodbye. Yeah.
Something said?
Go ahead. Let's get this rocking.
All right. I just have a couple. First off, this past weekend, Simpkins Square had their concert, their Christmas memories at the Jenny T. Anderson, and if you have not been to the new Civic Center or the renovated, you definitely need to go, but I just want to personally thank Johnny Johnson for being Santa Claus. Also.
That wasn't a real Santa Claus?
Sorry. I thought maybe you wanted to be it.
I have part of it.
I'm not going there. You got to grow a beard. Also, I want to thank County Park staff and Friends for East Cobb Park for the tremendous tree lighting event, which had to be delayed by a week, and also, once again, congratulate Major Kwan for his selection as East Cobb Citizen of the Year. And just a note about our schools. In the newest ranking from the State Education Department, I want to congratulate the top-performing Cobb County schools in District 2, Mount Bethel and Subcreek Elementary Schools, Dodgston and Dickerson Middle School, and Walton High School. And, Mr. Chairman, my final item, Brad's putting up on the screen. Seventeen years ago, Colorado teen named Rachel Scott became the first victim of the Columbine High School shooting. Rachel's final English essay reflects her heart, and I quote, "I have a theory that if one person can go out of their way to show compassion, then it will show a chain reaction of the same," end quote. Walton High School's Rachel's Challenge Club celebrated Rachel's commitment to making the world a better place. Over 6,000 paper links, each with a message of hope, anticipation, and compassion, have been created by Walton High School students and staff and formed into chains of kindness which you see on the screen. The chains are displayed on the ceilings throughout the school, reminding everyone that each of us can change the trajectory of another person's life just by taking the time to perform a single act of kindness. So this holiday season, I would hope that we can all slow down for a moment to celebrate the holidays and to be with family and to take the time to reach out to someone in need performing a single act of kindness. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Just a few announcements. Tomorrow morning, beginning at 7:30 at the Target on the East-West Connector, and I'll tell, the annual COPS and Kids Event will be held by the Public Safety and the Patrol Police. If you're in the area, feel free to stop by. It will be a very good event. Lots of children, approximately 100 to 150 will be taking, shopping with their local heroes, public safety officials. So that's tomorrow morning, COPS and Kids, the Target on the East-West Connector. Thursday, the Northwest Chamber of Commerce at the Merry Country Club will have a luncheon, although they will honor the Citizens of the Year from West Cobb, Acworth, and Kennesaw. So if you get a chance, register for that. That's always a great event, honoring those that are recognized by their peers as those that make a difference in their community. Third thing is, there's a lot of misinformation, and a lot of citizens take time to understand zoning, but we've decided, and we're going to start publishing Zoning 101 in our newsletter every week, so I encourage you to sign up so we can talk about some of the zoning categories, R-20, R-30, land use plan, all of those things that we have to look at every day. And as you know, and we all know, the citizens get most involved in. So look forward to Zoning 101 and welcome your comments on what particular types of zoning and things you'd like to see in that, but we're going to try to do that as well. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the county clerk's birthday, Ms. Mayberry, so I'd like to wish you a happy birthday. And, pardon? No, we're not going to sing because it's right before lunch. And then I'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and the best for you and your family. Commissioner Burrow handed me a note. She had to leave, so her five minutes will be 30 seconds now. This is really good. But announcement is, from now through December 16th, find your new best friend at the Home for Holidays Pet Adoption Event at Cobb County Animal Control at 1060 Al Bishop Drive, Marietta. Dogs and cats have already been spayed and neutered for only 60 bucks. The fee covers vaccination, deworming, heartworm, and all sorts of checks. For information, visit facebook.com/CobbAC. On behalf of Commissioner Burrow, we wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of announcements today. I would like to share, I'm having my last town hall for the year this Thursday, December 15th, at History Makers Church, which is located at 76 Wendy Hill Road in Marietta. The time will be at 6:30 p.m., and I want to thank Pastor Dorcas La Boy for opening up your church for that town hall meeting. Finally, for District 4 appointees, there is an open application process for anyone desiring to serve on any of the appointed positions made by me on any of our boards and authorities. We have an online application, which is due December 20th, and it can be accessed via email. I presume that everybody's in the electronic age, but if there's anyone listening to my voice who does not use the computer but would still like to be considered, please call our office, and we can make sure that you can copy that electronically. Thank you.
Thank you. My only comment is to, once again, thanks to NAACP, specifically the Cobb County Branch for this recognition this morning. I appreciate their thoughtfulness in this regard. Mr. Cobb Manager, anything else? We are adjourned. specifically the Cobb County branch for this recognition this morning. I appreciate their thoughtfulness in this regard. Mr. County Manager, anything else? We are adjourned.